Independent School District 624. Wayne, Dr. Kazmicek, I believe, has a statement to read.
Yep, so I'll kick off the meeting with this. So due to the current federal and state emergency declaration for Minnesota Directive for residents to stay at home and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting in White Bear Lake here in a school district, school board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Through the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is not feasible for the board members to be physically present at the regular meeting location and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular location due to the health pandemic. Persons may view the meeting on our website, IST624.org. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone when they are not speaking. School board members wishing to use the chat feature and then wait to be recognized by Paramon. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the district's website, as is reasonably possible.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmicek. I would now ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Mark Hand?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Chapman? Chapman?
Here.
Allison, here. Mullen?
Here.
Master?
Here.
Thompson?
I don't believe that Board Member Thompson is on.
I did, thank you.
All right, we will move into our first discussion item, which is in New Science and Math Standards Update. Ms. Paul, I believe this is you. Dr. Kazmicek is...
There we go, sorry about that. All right, Chair Mullen, Dr. Kazmicek, members of the board. We are very fortunate to have two amazing teaching and learning coordinators in our district, Anne Mowwitz and Jennifer Babish, and they are here tonight to give you an update on our science and math standards.
Okay, Steve, if you could click the first slide, thank you. I'm Anne Mowwitz, Teaching and Learning Elementary. Good evening, and we're excited to share with you an update and an overview of the science and math standards. And you can head to the next slide, if you would, please. As we start out, just wanted you to be aware of the standards review schedule that we are working through. And science standards were reviewed and revised during the 2018-2019 school year, and full implementation is expected to take place in 2023-24. And as you can see, down the line, following science will be language arts, social studies, and mathematics. So we're going to have a full decade-plus, full of really robust curriculum work. And so let's start with the new science standards. If you could, please, as I said, 2019. And we have started working on the standards this year, both at the elementary level and the secondary level. I'll start off with the elementary, and then Jen will be joining us. As you can see, the work that was last done on the standards in science was in 2009. And the work that Minnesota has put into the new standards rests on some really phenomenal work. In 2013, the Next Generation Science Standards were developed. We did not wholesale adopt those standards, but ours, our current standards, the new standards, are clearly aligned with that work. So as we go forward, here are some of the shifts that you will see, as you can see on the next slide, that are now being included with our new standards. And right away from the beginning, one of the key features of the new standards has to do with the word phenomenon. And so those things that take place in nature, a real key function and structure is that they want kids not just hearing about things or learning about, they want them to be engaged. They want them to wonder and to think about and create their own ideas about, for example, a puddle. How did the puddle get there? Where did it come from? What's going to happen? That's a simple phenomenon in nature. Or currently, if you walked outside, the buds on the trees, the greening of the grass, all of those types of things. So you start with the wonder, and then students will be expected to build models and think about why that phenomenon happens. So that is a key feature of the new standards. The other parts of the new standards have to do with... Oh, you can stay on that slide, if you would, thank you. Scientific and engineering practices. So the structures you're going to see throughout any content that's taught, kids will be asking questions, developing models, carrying out investigations, analyzing data, using computational practices to figure things out, constructing explanations, engaging in argument with evidence, and then evaluating and communicating information. Another feature or dimension has to do with cross-cutting concepts. So what you're going to see, that no matter what topic or core idea or key standard that's being taught in science, the students will be studying and looking for patterns, cause and effect, scale and proportion, energy and matter, structure, stability and change. And you'll see those key ideas throughout. And then in addition to those two components, you'll also study core ideas related to physical sciences, life science, earth and space, and engineering. And then all of those are developed around learning progressions from simple learning ideas all the way to the more complex ideas taught K-12. And a real strength of the new standards has to do with the coherence with other content areas, like ELA, reading and writing, and then mathematics. There are expectations that the science standards will be integrated, connected, and aligned with those areas. And you'll also find, as you get to dig deeper into the science standards, a strong focus on equity. It's immersed, it's embedded, it's expected. It's right in line with our protocol, Equity Protocol. And the one thing that I see, after studying this framework of science over the last year, it is really strongly connected to our strategic plan and what they're expecting students to do, and that's really exciting to see. If you could, the next slide, please? This gives you a sense of how will science change. And you're going to see less of rote memorization, just presenting of ideas without really engaging kids. The teacher providing all of the information, you're going to see less of that. Teachers posing questions, reading texts and answering questions, kind of cookbook labs, worksheets. Less of that and more of facts and terminology being taught through investigations and students developing their models and thinking. The students themselves conducting the investigations and figuring out their own models and try to explain why things are happening. More open-ended questions, multiple sources, and multiple kinds of investigations led by student questions. And then finally, the ways that kids engage are... They're acting like scientists, writing in journals, reports, presenting their ideas. I think student agency is all over this when I look at the instructional practice that will change. And so as we move forward, in elementary, I am involved with the study this year, Lori Moser. Principal from Onika is the key liaison from the principal group. And then we have two curriculum leaders, strong instructional leaders, Abby Case, a fifth-grade teacher at Onika, and Kim Roche are helping me lead the group of a cross-section of stakeholders that are studying and determining professional learning, alignment with the standards, and how to help teachers be prepared by 2023 to teach the new standards. And then Jen's going to share with you what we are doing within secondary.
Thanks, Anne. So just like elementary, secondary is really taking a collaborative approach with leadership, with teaching and learning, and our secondary administrator liaisons and our 612 science teachers. So within the standards, you will see the organization of the benchmarks. Now, the benchmarks are specific knowledge or skills that a student must master to complete part of an academic standard by the end of the grade level or a grade band. And so there are some changes to the 2019 benchmarks. And one of the biggest changes is with physical science. Physical science will be moving down to eighth grade, and then the sequencing of the middle school will be changing. So currently, we have, in sixth grade, we have physical science. Seventh grade is life science, and eighth grade is earth science. Now with the new standards, earth science will be moving down to sixth grade. And then in eighth grade, it'll be physical science. And then seventh grade will remain life science. So there's definitely some changes that we're going to need to prepare our teachers with, and also, obviously, our students. With the ninth through 12th grade band, you will see the continuation of chemistry, earth and space science, the life science, which is biology, physics as well. And then the integrated areas will remain with engineering, computer science, and nature of science. And then also with the new standards, like Anne had mentioned with the framework, really looking at contributions of Minnesota American Indian tribes and communities are embedded within the new standards as well. So rationale for the sequencing change, I'll just highlight two bullet points. So that second bullet point and the third bullet point. The committee really felt that by moving physical science, core ideas from high school to eighth grade really helps prepare students to take a full high school-level courses in earth and space science, life science, chemistry, and physics. So it opens that opportunity for students at the high school level. And then also, providing physical science in eighth grade really aligns well with the algebra-oriented eighth-grade mathematics standards. So those were some of the key points and reasoning behind the benchmark sequencing change. I know this is a busy slide, so I'll try to simplify it for you. Really, this is just an example of what MDE has provided as a sample transition and timeline for secondary coursework. You'll see that the same color indicates the same set of students. So this year and next year, we will continue as normal, or our new normal, but we'll continue with our current standards. And then you'll see in 2021, 2022 is when we will start to implement the new standards in just sixth grade. And then if you follow the sixth-grade class to 2022, 2023, you'll see then life science will change over to the new standards. And then by 2023, 2024 is when we expect to have full implementation of all the new standards at secondary. And this is really, the reasoning behind that is because this is when the new MCA IV tests will be given. And so we believe this rollout will be able to give kids and teachers a chance to be able to do initial implementation and then a full implementation so that they're really have a good handle on what these new standards mean for teaching and learning. And then by the 23-24 school year, all of the standards will be implemented in all grades. Graduation requirements will remain the same at this time, so three credits of science, including at least one credit of biology, one credit of chemistry or physics, and one elective credit of science. Now, as we know, many students over at our south campus go on to take both chemistry and physics. If you go to the next slide, this is just another middle school timeline to just remind ourselves that we do have a year or two to really be able to do professional learning and to get ready for the new standards. So the transition again will start in 2021, 2022 with the new standards, starting in sixth grade, and then seventh grade, and then eighth grade. And by that 2023, 2024, 612 will all be teaching the new standards. So finally, I wanted to just provide you with just the curriculum review design process and where we were at with both our middle school teachers and our high school teachers. You know, we really think about using the continuous improvement model. And so there's many steps in this process, and we really had to move quickly, but intentionally with the middle school teachers to ensure that we were able to meet that 2021-2022 implementation year. And so you can see middle schools a little bit further along. I also want to mention that all of the middle school teachers, 6-8, came together, curriculum leaders, department leaders, all teachers, and myself with our admin liaisons to select learning materials for the middle school. And we decided on the Amplify Science as the learning materials that we will be using moving forward with the new standards. And so at this time, I think we'll pause. And if you have any questions for Anne or I about the science standards.
Thank you both for giving that presentation. I just, with that, we'll open it up to questions. Are there any questions so far?
Mullen, a question?
Go ahead, Ms. Allison.
You had said at the very beginning that you used the... The committee used the Next Generation Science Standards, but then didn't adopt them wholesale. So was it that you just adopted the... The committee adopted the scaffolding to fit Minnesota's needs? I'm assuming, you know, adding in the contributions of Minnesota's American Indian communities. Can you tell me just a little bit more about how you adopted the next-gen standards to fit? And I say "you," I mean the committee, and to make them fit in Minnesota?
If you look at the standards, the new ones, you will really see the NGSS standards there. We didn't really leave out anything, but the contributions, that was the part, the Native American that you need to Minnesota. And I think, again, the connection to literacy and strong equity and within mathematics, those were some of the areas. Jen, did you have additional?
I think the best way I've heard it explained from MDE is we didn't adopt the Next Generation Standards, we adapted in Minnesota. And so we obviously use the NGSS as our framework and the standards. But as you know, Minnesota likes to, you know, add more to that and, you know, really nuance it to our state, and so that's what they've done.
And they're grade level-specific all across the state, is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions so far? Okay, I think we'll keep on moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next area that we'll feature is elementary mathematics. And if you can remember, over the last few years, typically when I've been in front of the board, we've been focusing on literacy. And I just want you to know that we haven't forgotten mathematics. And so I just want to share with you some of the highlights of the work with elementary mathematics. The standards will not be reviewed until 21-22, but we want to get ourselves in a position to start looking at our alignment and to really start ramping up our instructional practice. And we feel that we want to look at this now. So the next slide shows you just some of the things that we've done kind of in the background, as we've been working also with literacy. Teachers really came forward, the curriculum leaders said, "We can't forget math, and we need to continue to do work." So in January of 2018, we did a review of our elementary mathematics program. We had previously looked at it in 2009, 2010. So we always want to keep reviewing. And in looking at the assessment data, we saw some features where many of our students were doing well, but the students that struggled really struggled. And so we really wanted to get a better idea of what are the areas of mathematics that kids struggle with? And so our first move was to develop common interim assessments. And they were fully implemented this year. And that we really wanted to get a handle on, what are the areas within mathematics that our students struggle with? Well ahead of examining MCA data, we wanted to better predict where kids struggle so that we could really zero in on some of those different components. And the common interim assessments are the same across the district, those key mathematical ideas that we're looking at and developing then strategies well ahead of looking just at MCA data. So we're excited about those results, even though we've had a bit of a pause with the pandemic, but we will continue with that work. And another area that was identified in our study was our intervention curriculum. For literacy, we had a standardized type of a curriculum and alignment, and we didn't have something with mathematics. And so in the past couple of years, we worked on that alignment, looked deeply at the standards, and have selected a core curriculum. We did some piloting with it, and the intervention teachers are really excited because the curriculum is identified in ed reports as the highest and highest rating. And after trying it, so this year, we purchased the curriculum, and now we're in the process of providing professional learning for the intervention teachers. And to have it consistent across the board, and when they did try it out, we're working with students, they saw some really good gains in number sense. And so we're excited that we'll continue to grow that area because number sense is the number-one predictor for kids going on to advanced and being successful in advanced mathematics. The third area that we really developed and spent time with was in building number sense across the elementary school with a feature called Number Talks. And we have been working with Terry Wyberg from the University of Minnesota. And he has been working with us, I mean, providing professional learning for teachers, but also, he takes the professional learning and goes into the classroom and observes teachers teaching Number Talks. He gives them feedback. And we were right in the middle of his follow-up when the pandemic hit. So we're hoping that we can continue that work into next year. And a Number Talk is a very short experience where kids solve problems together. They talk about how they solve the problem. They talk about their thinking. And it's a very short, powerful way for kids to build a strong sense of number. And we're looking forward to continuing that next year. We also started this spring the Elementary Mathematics Study Group, and we're really looking at the research, the data, and designing what's our next move? After working with Terry, how can we continue to build on his work so that kids are very strong and successful in mathematics? So stay tuned as we move forward because at some point, we'll need to look at our core resources. But that decision is down the line, and we'll be well-prepared when we have new standards coming up in a couple of years. Any additional questions about elementary mathematics?
Are there any questions regarding elementary mathematics? Ms. Allison?
We have kind of a tangent question. So you said that the math standards will be revised in 21-22?
21-22, correct.
Right, so this is in preparation for that. I guess my question is, I was looking back at the standards revision chart. Social Studies is coming up this year.
We would, yes.
You know where I was going with this, Ms. Mowwitz. Yeah, because this is a lot of excellent preparation for elementary math. And I'm just curious if there's another plan in place for prepping for elementary social studies.
As you can see from the schedule, with science being robust, ELA, the reading and writing, is this year, they're on their second draft, so we'll begin to outline that work next year. Social Studies, we've already been contacted by MDE, some of the leaders, and have asked us to be involved in the initial writing of the standards. So we will look for opportunities within our leadership to get in on those first levels. We've already sent out some of the questions to our curriculum leaders. So we haven't forgotten social studies, we know it's near and dear to your heart. And it was one of my favorite adoptions, actually, over the year just because of some of the changes we made. And then anticipating mathematics. So each one is a critical area. And I think a lot of our focus since this opportunity comes, because there are going to be four in a row, where are the cross-cutting ideas, and how can we connect the pieces? And one of the exciting features that they're including in the standards is they're not just teaching the content, they're also adding in instructional practice, the pedagogy part. And that's different than how they've developed standards before. But I see common threads across all the content areas around what is really good instructional practice. So it'll be a challenge for us as we look ahead. And I speak of a decade, not just a few years, of how we weave this together.
Thank you, yeah, I was encouraged by all the talk about problem-solving in the science standard. That is really exciting, so thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, or is there more?
No, you want more? We're done.
Allison, I'm always willing to hear about math and science, those are my favorite subjects.
Oh, exactly.
Well, listen, thank you all, thank you all very much for your work, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, we will move into our next discussion item, B2, which is the Career Pathways Update. Is this Ms. Paul?
Jenny, Jenny Moore, you're on. So I'm going to let you click, so that you're... There you go. I just want to introduce Jennifer Moore. She is the coordinator of our Careers Pathway Program, and she's going to give you an update on some of the things that have been happening in light of the shifts to COVID, in addition to the way that there's been a team working on how the Career Pathways is going to fit into the work of our new high school and the future of learning work that you'll be hearing a lot about tonight. So here's Jenny Moore.
Thank you very much, welcome, Ms. Moore.
Thanks, Sarah, and Chair Mullen, Dr. Kazmicek, and the board members. So I'm really excited to share the work that we've been developing. A few things that I want to let you know is that we are going... I'm going to do a few things. I'm going to share kind of the development of where we're at in terms of what we're currently doing in Career Pathways, and like Sarah said, how this fits into the new high school and the future of learning. And then again, talk about the summer piece as well. One of the things that we did, starting pre-COVID, right about end of February, beginning of March, is we took a really deep dive into best practices and research across the nation and statewide about what's best practices for Career Pathways and how can we make our program that people are really identifying with? How can we take it up one notch, you know, one notch even higher and make it even better? So what we did, we, as in Michael McGarthwaite, my teammate in Career Pathways, the faculty, the staff, industry partners, we really took everyone's feedback, and we took a deep dive into these Minnesota Department of Ed career fields. It's really hard to see, but what I want you to look at is top left there is kind of that yellowy-orange color, is a business management and administration career field. And then within the career fields, the Department of Ed broke up into different career pathways. So top left orange is a business management and admin. The top is the green, that agriculture, food, and natural resources. Top right there is in purple, in the arts, communications, and information systems. The bottom right is more of that darker orange, in the engineering, manufacturing, and technology. That's where you'll see automotive and construction, and really any of the trades. The bottom there in the red is health, science, technology. And then that bottom left is blue, in human services. So we took all of this information, and if you go to the next slide, we took our seven existing Career Pathways, and we created four Career Field We took our seven existing career pathways and we created four career fields. That fit really well within White Bear Lake area schools and the high school, what we currently do. Now, these icons are currently being used in our 2021 registration guide for our students. If you look in the registration guide next to the courses, we picked icons that we felt represented. The career pathways and it's just yet another way for students to kind of use the generation Z brain. And say, how do we identify and brand pathways? But also make it feel like it's still a part of what we're currently doing in the whole entire high school as a whole. So we broke it up into four career fields. We have design, engineering and manufacturing technologies. We combined health and human services. We have a business management and entrepreneurship and then an arts and information system. So if you, oh, and then look at the top there, we have the little graduation cap. If you saw that anywhere, that means that a course is has a potential to receive some sort of college credit opportunity. In the next slide, then you'll see it broken up then into our design, engineering and manufacturing technologies. We have four pathways where we will help students really focus on. So construction skilled trades, of course, we have an advanced manufacturing, engineering, design and technology. And automotive and transportation systems. We really like the career fields idea because this for the past four years now, when we see students work. On a specific pathway in these trades or these these pathways. They typically find a lot of interest in the other coursework that is relevant to that. So like if I am in a construction skilled trades course, or if I have an interest in that. I tend to be really interested in, you know, in a CNC machining or some sort of other manufacturing opportunity that we have on campus. So again, in black is what we currently offer. If you go to the next slide, then you'll see our health and human services career field. Again, in black then is what we currently offer and I'm going to touch base on the red and what that means. So we have health and wellness career pathway. And we have our future educator pathway, which we're rolling out next year. And then in red, we have what's called our language services pathway. That if you see anything in red, it's something that we're working on for the future of learning for our brand new high school. And what we really want to do is make sure that we're engaging all of our electives. We're engaging all of our students regardless of their career choice, their post secondary plans. And really see a lot of a lot of skills that they have that they bring to their school and help them see that that's an employable skill. So language services pathway is going to engage and we're going to really invest in our multilingual linguistic students. Students who speak multiple languages, students who come, you know, our EL students is really one thing. But interpreter services is a huge career path that falls in this health and human services career field. That we're going to look at diving deeper into as we open up our brand new high school. The next slide is our business management and entrepreneurship. So we have our business management and entrepreneurship pathway. We were for short, we're calling it our business pathway that's rolling out next year. We're working on how does that look for marketing and finance? This is required, or this is encouraged by Minnesota Department of Ed to have these broken up into separate pathways. We are open to exploring that as we roll it out. But notice then in red, we have a new pathway in this career field. This is where our fax department falls into our culinary arts. And family and consumer ed is an elective department that is not currently a part of career pathways. But it's a very, it's a pathway that a lot of students really are interested in and we really want to honor that. And so why is it in this in this career field? Well, based on what Minnesota Department of Ed says, as well as what makes sense is that. I've worked in restaurants, I know a lot of us have in this room. That in order to be successful, the culinary arts, that cooking piece is the skill that our students are learning. But in order to run the business, we need business management skills in order to own your own restaurant, if you will. You need that entrepreneurship. And then also thinking about the future, our business pathway with the DECA and the new school store and the coffee shop. And what that will look like when we'll talks about maybe culinary arts area. It fits in really nicely and it helps them see that this really is a career field they can pursue. And lastly, we have our arts and information systems. I love that IT is actually in this career field because it's such an abstract concept for students. I think it's a really abstract for a lot of people. But IT falls in so many different buckets. I mean, it's anywhere, it's anything from cybersecurity to graphic design, network analysis. I mean, there's really a lot that goes into IT. And visual and performing arts are two other elective departments that fall into. What our students can explore at White Bear Lake area high school. But we also know that there are career paths and there are careers within these fields too. So by tying these arts and information systems, career fields together. We are actually helping a lot of our artistic students see that what they're doing actually is IT. So we're really excited about that. The next slide. Is something that we're super excited about to include. Okay, so most career pathways, especially the ones that are really successful in the state, have what's called universal electives. So we offer Avid, it's a great program. So many students take Avid and we really honor that at White Bear. We have a career investigations course and we have some world language, we have a ton of world language offerings to our students. We know that all of these classes and the skills that you learn in these specific classes. Are going to help you be employable regardless of your career path. Thus, we've created what's called universal electives and we chose just for fun, a bear paw, of course, to show that. In our newer registration guide next year, we will have these universal electives identified. So the last, next slide that is the big picture. Okay, so we haven't really changed much. Really, it's just a way of how do we, how do we create a message to help all students? And teachers and faculty and staff feel like they are a part of this without making it a required. It's not an academy model, it's not a required piece. It's a, it's an and, right? It's an additional piece to help them see that what they're learning really does have value. And it supports a lot of the core standards that Jen and Anne were talking about. That's the development piece that we're really excited about. Open it up to questions.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Really appreciate it. Are there questions regarding the career pathways?
Chair Mullen, I just have one quick question.
Dr. Arcan.
First, I'm going to say I love that you what we're doing here and we're becoming a leader in the state of where we're going. My question is, what role does our local needs assessment play with the development of our pathways? Are we looking at relating it that to meet the new Perkins five requirements?
I don't know quite the answer to that right now. The local needs assessment, typically if we work with any of our industry partners or any sort of feedback. We really make sure that what's being taught in the classroom is relevant in the industry. I'm thinking maybe Dr. Arcan, that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I was kind of looking at other other positions. So when we design a pathway, are we saving the kids up for the ability to be employed when they when they finish the program? Or are they going to go down a road and get a degree and then not find employment? Because that's kind of why we developed the pathway system, because students were going through getting a degree. But not having employable employability skills. And that's why I think when you do your. Your universal electives that really fit in the middle of the of the circle. That every kid should be taking these as part of the requirement, not as an elective that prepares them. So I was just curious how we decided what we're going to do. Basically, do we have a local needs or somebody says we need workers in the future in this area?
We look, the original pathways that we have, the trades are a great example, are used because of workforce demand. And I see what you're saying too. Minnesota D has been a really supportive partner with us, Department of Labor and Industry. We use a lot of the data to help us make decisions. One thing that we've seen with our students is that they don't, if they're if they're not choosing a specific. Pathway that has a high workforce demand, they may not see their, that they fit in this particular program. And the message we want to share with them is that it's about making an informed decision about their specific career choice. And then appropriately matching their post secondary plans based on that career choice. World language and universal electives is a great example. When we talked, we actually interviewed our world language department, Dr. Gillespie and I and our team did. And we just got great feedback from them saying, well, we know that students who may want to go to a four year liberal arts. Get that liberal arts degree is actually required to get a world language. So we really want to make sure that we're putting purpose behind their decisions. And also though, to your point, Dr. Arcan would be that. We're really trying to make sure that the opportunities and events that any sort of strategic opportunities that we're offering to our students. Is related to the workforce demand, not only in our local community, but that seven county metro area that we want our students to stay in. Does that help answer your question a little bit or support?
No, it does. And that's what I think we're all looking at is the seven county metro area to make sure that there's somewhere for them to go. So we're doing it exactly, or how it was intended, the way it sounds. Great job.
Thanks.
Are there other questions or comments?
Chair Mullen, I have a, I have a comment.
Ms. Ellison?
Thanks for your patience with all my comments tonight. I'm so excited about all these things. I agree with Dr. Arcan, this is really exciting work. I love the transferable skills that I see within the boxes and then across the boxes. But I wanted to commend you too on adding culinary arts. One of the unexpected results of the pandemic is that the restaurant world is being reshaped. And so I feel like that puts White Bear in a position to sort of be on the forefront. Of allowing students to help decide what that means. And there's only a handful of culinary arts programs in colleges in Minnesota anymore at all. So this will give students. An incredible opportunity to be skilled and be ready to start their career. So I'm really excited about that. So thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you. We're super excited. It's it, we feel like it's it's really meaningful work that students and teachers are resonating with. And that we're getting the feedback from them. And so we feel like with this idea that our students and everyone really sees like they fit. That's that's what we're excited about.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay, oh. Dr. Newmaster, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I forgot to send my little chat message. I'll get it. I, and I think my mic is on. So I just wanted to say that I love the way this is divided up. And there's not such a difference between like it was in the old days. Careers, pathways and universal electives. Because it all goes together to put together. A person that's capable of functioning almost wherever they are. And I can think of all the years I told our second language kids. Keep your bilingual, that's valuable wherever you work. And I do think this program values that. So that's that's really excellent. I like that as an old German teacher, that we're really valuing a lot of skills. And I think our pathways and our partners in White Bear have helped to work with our schools to make. Wonderful opportunities for our kids. So I'm really glad this is going to be strong. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that feedback.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Moore. Is there more?
There is. There's always more with Ms. Moore. Okay, you're switching gears a little bit. We're switching gears a little bit, but I just want to update all of you on what the summer is going to look like. We all know what's happening and so some big key things, right? So first off, last year we had over 90 paid interns. It's going to look a lot different this upcoming year. Our Gen Z connections program, which has been recognized statewide for paid experiential learning. In manufacturing, engineering and automotive is not happening this year. Based on, well, we interviewed all of our employers, we had 12 of them. And they just said, you know, we've done some layoffs and we're furloughing people. And we really want to make sure that if we're going to invest in anyone that we need to stick with our employees. We totally understand that. And so really, we've kind of shifted gears on saying, well, how can we potentially help you? And a lot of our employers, we've created a live job posting for employers who are currently hiring. And it's gotten a lot of clicks. Students are actually looking still for summer jobs. So we're finding creative ways to still honor and support them while our partnership and our relationship still stays the same. And we're kind of thinking about how can we offer perhaps like an OSHA training or some sort of online? We're getting creative about that, but we don't want to force the experience. We want to make sure that it's still a quality experience. Minnesota Trades Academy is still happening with also an alternate format. Our teacher, Dan Rossiter, who's an amazing teacher, he teaches at North and ALC. And really is our teacher champion in construction and then also manufacturing and engineering pathway. Will be doing, will have a smaller group of students, I think over at that little hockey arena over by North. And so he's been really creative about how we can work with students from a distance and still provide quality learning experiences. Summer Tech Depot, I know Steve Asper is in the room, that's another paid internship that we have through the district. Instead, I think that's still in the works, but we've worked on rather than opening it up. We're going to invite our our past interns who already have those policies and kind of the the working relationship figured out. So that they can actually jump right on board and help the district out this summer. And Firefly Computers was a huge one that we've had. We actually worked together and we've created multiple different shifts. So they went and they said, well, let's work around the Gen Z sleep schedule. And they actually are, we're creating something new this year. We're doing a two to 10 PM internship opportunity PM for those students that actually don't wake up until one o'clock in the afternoon. So we're trying to be innovative, but also being very mindful and trying not to be tone deaf. With our employers who are really, really, really struggling. We really want to make sure that that we are turning the tables. They're always so willing to help us, how can we help them? And be mindful that a lot of our students, their parents work at these employers and it's just a full circle. The other thing I really wanted to mention is our youth skills training grant for our certified nursing assistant program does end June 30. We asked for an extension from the Department of Labor and Industry. They were not able to grant that. And so as a result, we said, well, what can we do with our money? And our entire spring 2020 class has the opportunity to challenge the exam. I'm currently working with about 25 of our students and I'm going to work with them throughout the rest until June 30 to say. We're going to get you on if you want, if you want to challenge this exam, 100% we're in to support you. And we're actually able to try and purchase a simi, a mannequin that can simulate a clinical experience. Very little, very few high schools that I know of actually have a mannequin of this nature. So because of this, you know, we're just adapting and overcoming because the fact that we're not able to offer these clinical experiences. We said, well, let's be proactive. How do we create a clinical experience at South Campus next year in the event that they cannot do clinicals? And so we may be one of, again, a few high schools that actually has a a simu, a mannequin that can simulate clinical experience at South Campus. Scholarships go out Wednesday, nearly $90,000 again for our seniors. AP exams are online, which is a whole nother presentation. And we are rocking and rolling and we, I've been meeting with on average five to six students a day, just simply doing resumes. So things are changing, but it's still very much alive and well and and we will, we will overcome. Any questions about the summer?
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. Are there any questions regarding summer programming? Ms. Moore, I have a question. Can you tell me a little bit more about the Trades Academy on what they're planning on doing over the summer?
Yes, of course. So you know, a lot of the union training centers, Sam and his team over at MTA. Have worked directly with the union training centers that I don't know which specific union training centers are still in. We just finished up all of our distance interviews. So that was a big challenge for our students. So we got through all of that. And they are working on announcing their official interns here this week. And then after that, they've actually extended the deadline. So the timeline looks a little bit different. So any experience that the students, if the interns cannot go to the specific training center. Then the experience will come to Dan and our students at on campus. And he will replicate what they would have, would have done. So an example, I don't know, like laborers union, right? They do a lot of concrete and they do asbestos work there whenever you go up there. So if that experience cannot be replicated there, then then somehow Dan and his team will work together. His Minnesota Trades Champ. Academy Champions will work together to create some sort of opportunity, um, to do that. Now, uh, Chair Mullen, I can reach out to Sam if you're interested and I can just say, ask for an update on which uh, training centers are still in or can be still in. And I'd be happy to share that with you if you, if you'd like to hear more.
No, I'm, I'm definitely aware of which ones are we, are we managing any career navigator navigation for our seniors that are interested in going into the trades? Are we working with Sam and his team there and Sarah regarding the new online app that's going out?
Yes, I saw Sarah Leckowicz was, uh, featured in Star Tribune today, actually, for the app that just went out on Construction Careers Foundation. And any senior that, any senior will have additional support throughout the entire summer. And then if, and what we've done with, we've connected with our senior counselors that if there's any seniors who still need additional support next fall, even after graduating, that we can connect with them for career navigation and also connect them to the Youth Works Initiative in Ramsey County that's being led for, through the county. Um, we're going to make sure that they can get some of their training paid for or any sort of skills that they, any sort of soft skills or employability skills training that we can support them.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions? All right. With that, I will say, Ms. Moore, you're doing great work. Thank you very much for the update. Really appreciate all you're doing for the students. So thank you.
Yeah. And there's one last slide, but all it is, is that
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's okay. Minnesota Public Radio Career Pathways was featured here with Angela Davis. So it was kind of like a radio bucket list for me personally. But we just have, we, I just got three, uh, graduating seniors that were interviewed by our education reporter, Alyssa Shachman on Thursday. So stay tuned for, uh, Yadi Carroll and Isaac Mariama will be featured at, um, on Minnesota Public Radio. We're super excited. That's all I have and thanks for your time, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a good day. Um, with that, if there's no other questions, um, we will go to our next discussion item, uh, B3, which is the fiscal year 2021 preliminary budget overview. Uh, Mr. Walt.
Tim, you're muted.
Of course I am. I think the only way to follow up a rock star presentation like that is to go right into, uh, budget projections. So if, um, I'm going to present to my screen. Can you see it okay now? Yep. Okay. So I, every time we do a budget presentation, I bring this uh, slide up and it just shows the process that we use and when we report to the board. And so right now, our, the last time we reported on budget was in February when we brought the revised budget to the school board and, and the board approved that budget. Now in May, we'll, we'll, we'll bring into a work study session, the preliminary budget and we'll bring that back to you in June. So tonight's an opportunity for the board to, uh, get a look at what we think will be our, our first shot at the budget for next year and to give feedback. Last week, we had our executive, our executive finance committee, and so Chair Mullen and our treasurer, uh, board member, Beloit, had a chance to review this with, uh, our finance director, Tom Wazork, Dr. Kazmercheck and myself. Okay. You should be seeing the, uh, budget sheet now. I'll make that as big as I can. Does that look okay? So what we're, what we're looking at here is a, is a historical look of going back to 2018, 2019. Uh, for our current year is the revised 2020 budget. And then in the gray column, you have fiscal year 21. That's the next school year, uh, the 2021 school year. And then we've projected out for three years, uh, based on some assumptions that, um, we think probably makes sense. And, uh, uh, take a look at where we think things are headed. So looking at the revenue, this lines two through uh, 10 here show revenue. The first line four is property taxes. So these are, um, include our operating, our operating levy. We are, we're assuming a 1% increase in the operating levy. That's a, remember that that uh, is adjusted for inflation. Typically it's been around 2% that that's increased. Uh, we think we're being probably conservative at a 1%. But we also just don't know what the impact of, uh, the pandemic is ha- is going to have on that. So we assumed a 1% increase in, um, local property tax revenue. Line five is the investment earnings and I put my cursor on that. That's 192.5. We actually cut that in half this year. Um, as, as we project on what we think we're going to earn in interest, we think, uh, interest rates aren't good. We think we're going to see those, the revenue from that not be as high as we have seen in the past year. So we're being conservative and we brought that number down to $192,500 in interest revenue. Number six, other is essentially fees. Um, again, uh, we don't know exactly where we're going to be with that. We're just keeping that line flat. State sources, and this is our, our state aid primarily our student formula. Um, that increase of 2% is already in statute. So we'll see that. Uh, unless the legislature decides to reduce that, we don't think they would. We, that will be our number. Uh, special education, recall that last year, the legislature uh, tried to address the cross subsidy and by removing the cap, we're projecting an increase of about a million dollars in special education. Uh, revenue that will help us with that, uh, cross subsidy. And then finally, federal sources are remaining flat. So it brings us at our revenue of about $124 million. Next we look at expenditures. Uh, this first line, well, th- these break down into quite a few different budget categories, but, um, essentially I think what's important to understand in expenditures is that we've already negotiated our agreements with, with all of our, uh, organizations or units and we've, those are all built in. And we have agreement signed. So we've increased the expenditures as per the contracts that we've negotiated. Um, I don't think, I mean, essentially that's the case there and, uh, we end up with 123,679,000 dollars in expenditures. And so uh, we think we're, we end the year 328,550 dollars to the positive. As we go down toward, uh, fund balance then. So the first yellow line is the change in fund balance. It'll be a $328,000 increase in our fund balance, leaving us uh, with an unassigned fund balance of 15,343,553 dollars or at 12.4%. That's, uh, that's the general fund. Um, maybe it would make, uh, we'll, we'll look at nutritional services. This is fund two. And recall last month, we spent some time looking at what we thought the pandemic impact on nutrition services would be. And that's the numbers that are reflected here. If you look at our current year, we uh, budgeted to end the school year with a 12.1% fund balance. That all changed after that uh, presentation back in November, or excuse me, February. And now with the lack of revenue, uh, for, um, lunches. We, and we're continuing to pay our employees out of that fund. We're going to see that fund balance all but disappear. Uh, with a balance of 1.2% in our nutritional services fund balance. Community services, you know, community services was having a very good year. We expected, uh, we had budgeted $119,000, um, ex- uh, expenditures over revenue for this year, but we, but as the year was moving forward, it looked like, um, uh, that, that fund was doing great and we think we would have ended in the positive. Then the pandemic hit and we're, we're seeing that fund balance go from 16% down to seven and a half percent. So, um, probably one thing I should point out, and I, I skipped over this on expenditures, not intentionally. I should have explained um, the assumptions and expenditures because, um, these are very challenging assumptions. I mentioned, um, uh, and the revenue where we built a budget with 0% increase in state aid over the next four, three years. Expecting that, as we understand the state budgets looking to be 2.4 million or billion to the negative. Um, it's, it's not a stretch that we would see 0% increase in state aid. There's not much we can do to impact that. The only thing we can do to impact or to impact the budget in that scenario is to um, address it in expenditures. This scenario shows a 0% increase, um, in our employee contracts over the next three years. Uh, including just steps and lanes. And so when we start to look at the trend and look at that revenue trend, if you start from the left in 2018, 19, you see increases in the five to six million dollar range per year, and then you see it really begin to flatten out. It goes up primarily because enrollment goes up. So as the student formula is based on the numbers of students that you have in the district, um, that number will increase as our enrollment increases. But that's essentially the only thing that impacts that and the 1% that we included in the local property taxes. When you go to expenditures then, if we only budget in steps and lanes, our expenditures still continue to increase. And then you can look at line 29, which shows the excess of revenue over expenditures or the deficiency as it, you know, starts to pan out. So you can see that we do okay for next year because we were expecting an inflationary increase in special ed uh, next year for, yeah, fiscal year 22. But then when you get into 23 and 24, we don't see the increases in special ed funding. And we start to see really negative numbers in our fund balance. And if we slide down and you can see the fund balance from FY21 goes up a little bit next year and then really starts to slide. But that assumes, uh, like I said, uh, you know, 0% increase in our contracts and that's, um, that's a pretty, pretty difficult, pretty challenging, uh, threshold. So we built a second scenario. And I think it would be worth taking a look at that as well. And this is, um, reflects the same in revenue. Um, but builds a 1% each year, um, in salaries. And so in, in years 22, 23 and 24, um, we kept our revenues flat with the exception of state aid as it pertains to student enrollment. And we increased our, um, contracts, uh, at a 1% rate, 1% plus steps and lanes. And you can see the negative impact. Things start to get away from, start to really get away from us then as we go to the out years. So instead of seeing a $426,000 um, excess over revenue over expenditures in FY22, we see that go negative. And then, uh, the next two years out, we see those numbers really take big steps toward the negative. So there again, you know, we don't have a lot of control over what our revenue looks like. Our control then becomes what we can do with expenditures. And so in order to balance our budget, we'd be looking at, in this case, uh, you know, some really significant um, adjustments in the coming years. And as we look at, at what those numbers do to the fund balance, um, the second yellow line here, you can see we go from 12.4 to 11.9 to 9.6 to 6.7. And it would be very quickly that we would end up, you know, completely blowing through our fund balance. As we look at the out years in nutrition services and community services, we see really challenging years ahead of us in those areas too. So those are two scenarios. One, again, uh, both scenarios having flat revenue in the future. And then one scenario showing, um, 0% increases and the other showing one and 1% each year, um, and then steps and lanes in both. Tom Wazork, our director of finance is with us tonight and Dr. Kazmercheck as well. So we're certainly willing or able to answer any questions on this.
Thank you, Mr. Walt, uh, for the update. Questions regarding, uh, the preliminary budget? Mr. Chapman?
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair Mullen. Um, Mr. Walt, in terms of the contracts, uh, that have been negotiated, if you could remind me, uh, how far do they go? Is it another year or two years? I can't recall offhand.
Yeah. So the, we're, we've negotiated a contract through fiscal year 21 and that's all that we have negotiated so far.
Okay. Thank you.
So typically, you know, next year at this time, we'd be, uh, we'd be in negotiations for fiscal years 22 and 23.
Ms. Boyd, did I see that you had a question?
Yeah, I do. Thanks, Don. Um, remind me again, so over the summer, we go back to childcare is going to be fee-based. And then, um, what happens with the, the lunch situation?
With the what situation?
The lunch.
Lunch situation? Yeah. Uh, well, lunch, uh, we can continue to serve as we have during this pandemic response era uh, through, through the summer. And we're committed to doing that through June 30th at this time. And we're going to evaluate, uh, we'll, we'll evaluate how June goes and, and that may well continue through the summer. As far as, uh, childcare extended days, uh, services during the summer, uh, maybe, uh, Mr. Maurer or Dr. Kazmercheck might want to comment on that.
No, I can jump in for a minute, Mr. Walt. Yes. As far as our, um, extended day program will be, um, we're working through adjusting to the new protocols and procedures given by MD and MDH as far as lunch goes. Um, we'll have the same options that we've had, as we've had in the past, given what we know from nutrition, nutrition services. Um, if we're at a specific school where free lunches, um, due to our title, being a title school where we at, those, the same, uh, lunch plans and same, uh, planning that's gone for those in the past will be the same as going forward. Um, otherwise there, we could get to a point too where there's uh, low fees for lunches like we've had in the past as well. So it'd be similar practices that we've had in the past, given the information that we receive from the state.
I think, um, I think, um, the question was around childcare. We're going to, we continue to offer childcare through the summer that we're able to charge fees for that moving forward.
Correct. Yep.
Yeah. Just clarifying that.
Have we already had people starting to sign up for that at this point?
Oh, yep. Yeah, we have roughly 450 families, uh, registered for summer care between elementary and middle school right now.
How does that compare to last summer?
Uh, I think last year, year end for the summer, we were probably at around, I think we're around like 530, 535. So yeah, still a lot of interest, a lot of families in need of care. And, uh, we're working really hard right now to make sure that we're prepared to, you know, um, you know, provide that care and, uh, follow the new guidelines given by the state. So yeah, we're seeing a little bit, um, people will continue to sign up throughout the course of the summer too, if we're able to, like we've had in the past, but that's our current numbers as of right now. I think we're at 451.
Okay. And, and my, my last question was, I, I know we're spreading it out um, between the schools a little differently. That we have, um, more space to, to distance. Um, how does that look like? What, or what does that look like in each building? Cause obviously some of the people are there, but a lot of the staff isn't there. Um, what does that look like in each building? Like someone who's opening the building? Are the principals still going to be on site there? Or what does it look like in the buildings?
As far as summer, um, yeah, that would, yep. Yeah, that would, yep. Principals may be in their buildings like they have before. I mean, they are typically in and out throughout the summer, but they're not providing direct support to our extended day program. So our extended day site leads, we have leadership teams at each building that take care, and our custodial staff are there to unlock and open up buildings. So it should be very similar as to how it's been in years past.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Ellison, did you have a question?
Uh, no, after all, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the work. And with that, we will move into our next discussion item B four, which is a facilities planning update. Mr. Walt, actually, let me back up, sir. Did you have anything else on regarding the budget?
No.
Okay, then we will move into our facilities planning update, and I believe this is also you.
It is. Thank you. So last November, our community approved a facilities improvement bond referendum. And we've been working hard since November to deliver on that. And so tonight, we have Paul Aplikowski and Sal Bagley from World Architects and Engineer. They've been facilitating, I, I, I don't think it's a stretch to say probably about a hundred meetings so far and many, many more to come. So Paul Aplikowski and Sal Bagley, I'll turn it over to you to provide an update.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, board chair and members of the board. We have a lot of slides for you tonight, so we're going to go pretty quick. We wanted to include them because there is a lot going on, and we wanted you to have access to that. But we're going to go fairly quick. If you would like us to slow down and talk more about any particular thing, please let us know. All right, so this is a update. And if you remember, the projects are on a phase schedule, so we'll give you kind of updates of the status of the ones that are underway. The next slide just gives you a quick overview. You've seen this many times before, but it's the basic scope for all of the projects across the district. And then the next slide is a summary of that same information in a different way. So generally speaking, it's additions and renovations to basically every building in the district, security improvements, some deferred maintenance, and then some of the bigger pieces are a new K five elementary school up in Hugo and the big addition to the high school to unite the two parts of the high school together, to create a nine twelve comprehensive high school, which I think we're all taking to calling a new high school, even though it is being grafted onto north. Then we'll talk a little bit about design process. So the board saw this a little while ago. But the first slide we want to put in here and just, we understand and want to always recognize that your strategic plan is at the, is at the heart of this all or the beginning of this all. And we keep that in mind as we look at the designs of your buildings. And then there's really a vast process going on right now to help remake the district, both in programming and in facilities. And that's what this chart shows on the left side, facility standards. That's a process that we're really helping to facilitate. And then on the right, your administration and many, many people are involved in other discussions about how programming can change over time. And I think it's a great marriage so far. I think we're talking about all kinds of really wonderful things that can happen in the future. Then getting into a little bit more detail, this is the basic drawing or a diagram of how we do participatory planning with your, with your teams as we work through the projects. So every building has what we call a core planning group. So that's a set of stakeholders from the building that we get together and really collaborate on the design with them. That is made up of usually staff, sometimes students in the older grades, parents, and all kinds of support people or other stakeholders that have a stake in the building. I mean, we work with them over a series of meetings to come up with the design of the building. And then on the right, we say that goes to decision makers, which is really the administration of the board, of course. You have final say over all of the things that are happening. And then I'll just highlight the next slide quickly. That one shows a typical drawing of what we call a user group. So for every space in the district that we're going to affect, which is a large number of spaces, we'll do a drawing like this, and it represents a meeting with staff. And usually, it's two to three meetings with staff about that space. So once we get the big picture put in place with the core group and figure out how the building is going to be organized, we then go back and meet with a small group of users from each space. So by doing that, we really stretch out the footprint of people that we interact with. And the next slide gives you some idea of where that is. So in the last five months, we had over seventy eight meetings totaling about a hundred and two hours of time. And that's involved over two hundred and seventy different people in the district. So you can see that we're touching a lot of people, and we're not, we're not done yet. We are through a lot of the design, or at least the preliminary part of the design, but there's still more phases to come. So this is just a high level overview of the schedule. The future of learning committee met in December and January and set some kind of groundwork for the groups, other groups to meet. The new elementary and the high school started schematic design that in January, we've been meeting with them continually every other meet week or every few weeks with them. And we probably, we're done, we think, with the new elementary school for now. We have one more meeting with the high school coming before school's out. And then we are working through those user group meetings that we talked about. We also want to highlight tonight the, what we're calling the Phase One Elementary School. So Lincoln, Matoska, Vadnus Heights, and Willow are also largely through the initial design phase, that schematic design phase. And the transportation building is on a little bit faster schedule because we are hoping to have that building well under construction next year and operational so that we can get the buses off of the high school site to help with construction there. So that is scheduled to open next summer. And I won't go through this in great detail, but this is a more detailed version of the schedule for each project. Blue is the design phase, yellow is the bidding, and orange is the construction phase. And I think one thing to note is that you can see there's a number of schools, Birch, Hugo, Lake Hairs, that will be not starting design until early next year. So there's a second phase coming, and we're always mindful of that. So we'll give you a quick update of the Phase One Elementary Schools, and I'll let Sal go ahead and do that.
Good evening, board members. Thanks for having us. So we're going to give you a quick update on the status of Lincoln, Matoska, Willow Lane, and Vadnus, as well as the transportation building, elementary, and the high school. So next slide, please. So here's just an overview of Lincoln Elementary. Next. So to remind you of the scope, so at Lincoln, we are adding a gymnasium, a much, much desired gymnasium, conference room for the building, a cooler and an extended day office, rearranging the parking on that site to support that addition. As with all buildings in the district, there is funds to renovate the media center. And then in Lincoln in particular, the currently, the small gym will be renovated to serve a new purpose. We'll show you that on the diagram. And then as a future project, the all classroom and media center furniture will be replaced. And in total, it's about eleven point three million dollar project. I won't read all of these to you. As Paul mentioned, we work closely with the core planning group at every building to kind of set the mission goals and philosophy of the project and what needs to be achieved, kind of the what of the scope. So these statements really represent, I'll just linger on them for a little bit longer here, really represent kind of our discussion with those stakeholders as we work to bring them a solution. And these are really the rules of the design that our whole design team looks back to. All right. And Lincoln is a little bit bigger projects. We had a couple pages of those. So here is the diagram that represents the work to date at the end of schematic design. So the entire first floor building floor plan can be seen in the center part of the slide. And then we've used color to indicate really any spaces that are being added or impacted. So the gymnasium is obviously the largest box in here. It's blue. It's intended to be built as a part of a larger addition right on the other side of the cafeteria, and that will help improve circulation in the building. So you can get to that new space either through the cafeteria, they'll have some work done to it, or through the kind of link connection near the media center. The green on the right hand side, it's a little bit easier to see the renovation of the media center there to create some small group rooms, a work room, and to allow some kind of openness to the circulation into the new addition. You can see the building conference room in that golden color, again, built in that link, spaces for extended day office and storage, some bathrooms to support the addition. And then last but not least, the freezer and receiving areas. The location where the additions being built does complicate access to the boiler room. And then I will just say on the left hand side, we are zooming in, that icon zooms into the small gym on the north. So that's the, we are currently using for PE, and now with the new gym, you won't need to in the future. So showing space for a general music classroom, as well as a space for orchestra, being renovated out of that, as well as maintaining some of the storage for use out on the playground. All right. And next, we'll go through Matoska. And Paul already said it, we're kind of joking, we're going through a lot of things pretty quick here. So feel free to stop and ask questions if you'd have them. The scope of Matoska is to renovate the media center, create a freezer, an EL room, an extended day office, and another specialist room. So a space to be used by both music and or language. The new media center and classroom furniture, that will be a future project. And in total, it's about a three point four million dollar project. As with the other core planning groups, we worked with that committee to write their draft criteria. I'll just let those linger for a second. And then here is the diagram. So here's the entire building floor plan. In the bottom left hand side, you can see the media center renovation. So the creation of a flexible classroom that can be used both for orchestra and maker space activities, some small group space and office for the media center. And then really, as with all the media centers in the district, rebranding as the Learning Commons with lots of flexibility and individual and small group workspace. The creation of the freezer across the hall from the kitchen on the very left hand side of the diagram there. And then some of the work at Matoska has been to move people around to more appropriately sized spaces. So you can see the psych and social worker moving near there, some space for extended day storage, intervention about midway through the floor plan. And then the classroom addition is down towards the fifth grade wing, for those who are familiar with the building. So an additional two classrooms there that are intended to help address the space needs. And we're still in discussion with that group about what the best way to use that quad of four classrooms will be. So you can see above it, it says specialist, first grade, fifth grade, or tier two. So I think they can see lots of, lots of possibilities on how to use that pod. Next. Oh, and just zooming in a little bit for those who maybe couldn't read the labels. All right, Willow Lane. Scope of Willow Lane, media center renovation, creation of freezer and orchestra space, the new media center and classroom furniture, and it's about a two point eight million dollar total project cost. Again, I'll let the criteria just sit here for just a moment. And we'll go to the diagram. So the diagram, you can see in the gray on the left hand side of the floor plan here, we're really working to try to rearrange what is a bit of a network of rooms to create space for extended day office, extended day storage, the freezer, the PTO or PTA storage, as well as some building level storage for paper and things like that. So that's in that left hand side. And then zooming into the media center addition renovation. So we're seeing the creation of that room that can be used for orchestra. We've decided to label it orchestra slash flex for, like it indicates, flexibility. And then showing how much of the media center is intended to be quite open and flexible, making sure that you can secure your book assets and a couple of small group rooms. And last but not least, we'll go into Vadnus. Again, scope, pretty similar to many of the other buildings, media center renovation, renovation to create extended day and orchestra space, and we also need to create a freezer. Two point nine million total project cost. In the criteria. All right, so here's the, this is, Vadnus has some split level to it. So this is kind of the main level and lower level floor plan. You can see the Learning Commons renovation over on the right hand side in blue. We'll zoom into that. And then on the lower level, the creation of that freezer, the extended day storage, and replacing some building level storage. Next. So here is looking at the lower level, the creation of a true freezer and cooler and restroom for the food service area, a storage space for extended day, dry storage space across the kitchen, which is where some custodial storage is happening, and then in addition to replace that custodial storage. And next. And zooming into the Learning Commons here. So the arrows represent kind of connectivity with the rest of the building and perhaps transparency. Couple small group rooms there for services that happen out of the media center, a large group zone, and then again, making sure you can secure your book assets with the openness of the media center in that bookroom.
I will, I just wanted to mention that for those of you on the board and the people out on the internet, a lot of those diagrams don't match the diagrams that might have been around before the referendum. So those referendum diagrams were scope diagrams that set the budget. And what you're seeing now is really the result of collaborating with the staff at the buildings. We use their good ideas and their understanding of the building to rearrange things, but always mindful of the scope. So we are still on the original budgets for all those things, even if it changed how we're going about solving the referendum promises.
Correct, and I will just say maybe in terms of where we're at in the process, we have had three to four core planning group meetings per building to land these diagrams. And we're just now, last weekend, this week, getting into that user group process for all four of these buildings.
Do we have a moment to pause for questions?
Sure, absolutely.
I think Dr. Newmaster has a question.
I do. I'm glad to see that we're using the American Library Association terminology for the twenty first century, Learning Commons, and I'm glad to see that the process is following through, that our facilities committee recommended. Media centers are getting a good expansion and refresh so that they can meet the new, the new changes in all kinds of formats and media. And that's one thing, I do think, when you've got bookroom, it's a funny term because even over the last fifteen years, lots of books are checked out, but there's other media. So it's not like you have to lock up all the books. Even at North Campus, where we were open to all kinds of groups before school, after school, whatever, the only thing we ever locked up was a head and room with equipment. So I, I just feel like that securing the books was, was kind of a funny clink from years past. And there are things that are, that we would secure, like projectors and cameras and expensive tech. But I hope it's a community space that's open with free use before and after school. So, but I'm really pleased. It looks good. And my only real question is, did you have a media specialist on the team? Because we have no media specialist right now.
Sure, I can maybe speak to a little bit about the process and the input that's been gathered. Those are great points, and I think the, all of the committees have wrestled with the idea of what needs to be secured and at what times and from who might be the right way to phrase that. So before embarking on all of these projects, a survey was sent out to all elementary principals and instructional coaches and your district level media department to try to gather some input and direction for these groups. And that was shared at all of their, I think, at their second core planning group meetings about all the ways you use these spaces now, how you might use them in the future. And even asking about some of these, you know, does anything need to be secured? And it represented a really interesting variety, and I think there was a lot of sentiment along that of, you know, why do we need to secure anything and who are we securing it from? While trying to balance maybe the practical reality of if you lose a significant part of your collection, that that does have a cost to it. But I, I think the committees have all weighed your, your questions heavily and will probably continue to do so. We're really now just getting into the user groups of exactly where shelving is and exactly where walls are. And what do those walls look like? And how open are they during the day? So.
I think it's also a both and. All of those bookrooms are intended to be student accessible spaces and quite visible. So a lot of them will have glass that goes between the main media center and that area. So during the day, that can actually act, it can allow more animated and active things to happen in the media center, and there can still be a quiet spot by the book. So you can imagine our intent is to build in like reading books within the bookroom. So it's a usable space as well as holding the books. And then I think people felt more comfortable after school, particularly if they were able to put the books away and let that space be more accessible to the public. So we're trying to do the best of all those things together.
Well, it's an interesting philosophy. And maybe elementaries are more into that. But I just wanted to say, they have other media. It's not just books. That sounds like something out of the sixties. And so the little pictures that look like a textbook storage room don't really represent anything you're planning because it didn't look like an open friendly space.
Sure, we have a lot of work to do to figure out how to make that a beautiful space. And as Sal will work through those details in these next stages.
So all those lines of shelves didn't represent anything, really?
Well, I will say that the reality is that your elementary schools have a lot of books. Well, I, I will say that the reality is that your elementary schools have a lot of books. And everybody, yeah, very invested in having those books accessible to students. So we do need shelves that are there. But exactly how they're configured and how we make the space usable is yet to be determined.
And comfortable and inviting and places for kids to flop and read or listen.
Exactly.
That's my thought. And my last thought is I sincerely hope that in, in addition to having wonderful spaces and great new furniture, we again put back our elementary media program. That's it. Thank you. It looks great.
Yeah, thank you for the comments and questions.
Sorry, I was on mute. I apologize. Is there anybody else that has a question or comment? Okay, I will then ask you to continue. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. I realize we're moving fast. Okay, so we'll hit the highlights of the new transportation building. So the scope is a new facility to support all the transportation operations that are currently happening on the North Campus Central Middle School site. And then includes some office space, maintenance space for servicing buses as well as bus, and I should really say bus and vehicle parking. From a schedule perspective, they have met three times at the core planning group through the end of April. And we just finished our first round of user groups with kind of all four impacted groups. And we're thinking another round of user groups will be happening in the very near future. Here is their criteria. I guess I'll just say maybe if this is not a program that's familiar to everybody on the call or on the, watching at home, I'm really talking about kind of your bus driver, bus and van drivers and the experience they have. The experience your office workers have and the experience your bus maintenance personnel have and what resources they need access to and in kind of in what order and sequence. Next. So here is the draft diagram. I have to make it a little bigger for myself. So the left-hand side is intended to be the main entrance. There's a vestibule seen in kind of a golden rod color there. And the intent is that you can come in a common vestibule and take a left and go to the driver's room, which is really functioning as kind of a workroom or break room for drivers as they arrive, come pick up their keys, understand their routes and take breaks during the day with access to a small kitchenette as well as some restroom facilities before they go out driving or between routes. Or you could go from that vestibule and head dead ahead and get into the more office function of the transportation facility. Reception and open, that's where staff will sit. Two offices, a conference room, and then some support spaces like the data and electrical room and some storage. And then you can see the building jogs down and then we're really within the maintenance bay. All along the left-hand side is in kind of all of the smaller rooms that are support. So it's receiving, entire room, locker rooms for maintenance staff, custodial, an office, a small shop area, some storage, and then the compressed lubricants area. And then there's the main open bay. So you can see there's spaces for four buses to be parked in that open maintenance bay. On the right-hand side of that is a separate fifth bay. It will function as a wash bay. And the wash bay has kind of its own mechanical system. So there's a small room there. And then above that bar of storage and office and the receiving and tires is the mechanical mezzanine and additional storage. So that's what the call out off to the right-hand side is. And here's a draft site plan. I, I won't go into too much detail. We're in close collaboration with the city of Hugo about this. We received the condition permit last year and kind of preliminary sketch plan review. And we're getting ready to submit to them in a more formal manner. But Fenway Boulevard North is on the left-hand side here, showing a parking lot to the very west side of the site for both drivers as well as office staff and maintenance staff to park in. Whereas the northern curb cut is really intended for the function of buses coming and going. At the far east side of the site is an enclosed, in a fenced area, for buses and vans to park. And then the, kind of between the building and that parking area are things like the fueling island and the fueling tank. All right, Paul, you want?
Yeah, unless there's questions, we'll go on to the new elementary school and then the high school. So the new elementary school is, is going to be located up in Hugo. It's intended to be a K-5 school, which will make Onika and the new school K-5. We, our budget is for 101,000 square feet or about $43 million worth of construction costs. But again, we're following that same process with the core planning group. On the next slide, you can see some inspirational images. So we've done a lot of research around the city of Hugo and the site and have been trying to come up with some influential things to help inform the design of the building. And I think the city of Hugo has a lot of really interesting natural assets. And that's part of what we're trying to key into with the building. And I like to point out that picture on the upper right, that's a picture of Onika Lake. And I like to say Onika Lake was having a good hair day that day. It's a beautiful picture of, of that body of water. Then on the next slide, you can see that there is, I'm sorry, that's a little different than my version of things.
You have to click one more time, Steve. I think it comes into view. There you go. Thank you.
We're also looking at the regional, region there and ways to tie it together. And one of the, I think assets of Hugo is kind of being on the edge of development between the city and nature. So with the core group, we've come up with four concepts or four kind of categories. Civic, natural, home, and rural. And this building and site kind of sits at the nexus of all those things. Then on the next slide, we have a quote we found from the city of Hugo website. The best qualities of urban and rural living come together in the city of Hugo. And so we're trying to use that as a little bit of inspiration for the layout of the building. On the next slide, you can see this is a preliminary plan. We'll show you a more detailed plan. But we're, we're thinking about taking those kind of iconic areas and building them into the building design. So the classroom areas will feel a little bit more like home. And the commons areas, the center of the building will feel a little bit more like open, natural space. And then the greeting more civic in nature as you pull up to the building. So we'll talk about that in more detail. This is a preliminary site plan. You can see that we are hoping to get access off of 61 and about the middle of the site. That's something that's working, working its way through the approval process now with the city and the county. When you come in that site, you will have a separate area for bus parking off to the left. So they'll be able to separate out and not be mixed in with parents during drop-off. Parents and staff will go up the north and be able to park in the parking lot or stack around the parking to get to the front door and pick up their kids or drop them off. And you can see this design allows an off, a, a great deal of stacking space for parents. So we should be able to accommodate quite a few cars on site. We are showing some fields. So this version of the plan shows a softball field and a soccer field up on the north. And then we believe there'll be some green space down to the south there, south of the bus loop. And then also that bus loop during the day will double as a hard surface play. So that is related next to the building for that so that you can come out there and do hopscotch and all the kids need to do to get their energy out during lunch. I will point out that this site is actually quite large. It's actually, I think, 90 acres of site. And this upper right-hand part of it that we're building on is about 23 acres. And that is the spot that's buildable. The rest of the site is a beautiful, natural wetland. All right, then on the next slide, this is a, a copy of the floor plan to date. So on the, down on the right there, you can see there's the main entry. When you come in, the administration is right there and that will include a secure vestibule. So once school starts, people will be forced into the office to check in. Once you step beyond that point, you can see in blue kind of the commons and public spaces of the building. So the Learning Commons is the heart of the building there. And that's quite open and connected to the learning, to the classroom areas around it. And then the cafeteria is on the right there. Then to the, if you keep going, going down that hallway to the right, you have the music area and the gym. So the kind of the more noisy and public places are off on that side. Also making it more accessible to public in the evening if need be. And then as you go to the left, you can see something labeled studio one, two, and three. And we'll show you some more detailed plans of that. But in both this school and the high school, we're exploring a little bit different concept for classroom space. So each one of these studios contains five classrooms. But the idea is that those classrooms are collaborative, where the staff are working together with a set of students to, to learn in that space. Also on this floor, they, in the orange color there is the special ed level, level three suite. All right, and then the next slide shows an upstairs. So this is a two-story building and you can see on the upper floor, the, there's three more studios and then some support spaces, a multipurpose room and the language rooms up there, specialist rooms. And then what's shown in white is either roof or a second story area. So the commons is going to be a two-story area. So you could actually see down to it from the second floor of the building up here. And then the next slide. This is a zoom in of the learning studio. So I'll just run through the features of that quickly. On the bottom of the slide there where that arrow comes out, that's the door into the rest of the building. So that connects with the plan that we just saw. Inside there, there is a large amount of flex space. So what in an older style high school might be thought of as hallway here becomes learning space. And then there's, you can see five classrooms labeled around the plan. The current intent for the design that we're working through with user groups is that those five classrooms might not all be exactly the same. They offer different features. And so students can take advantage of different things. Current thinking, which will evolve, is that classroom five is maybe more of a wet lab or an activity lab. So it might have a hard surface floor and some extra access to sinks and some different kind of furniture that allows it to be kind of a makerspace. And then classroom three might have more technology in it. So it's shown there with some computer collaboration tables. And then there's some interesting other features like classrooms one and two have an operable wall between them. So they can be used as a team teaching area if they want, or they can be separated out. Another interesting part of this design is the, on the left there, that gray area is what we call the mudroom. It's actually the mudroom and the toileting for this area. And a, a unique feature of this building is that the students actually will enter from the backside of the building off the buses and come into the mudroom and drop their things in their cubbies and lockers there and then go out into the learning space. And the next slide gives you a 3D view of that. So in this, you can see kind of how that lays out. And interesting to note that there are, classrooms two and four are quite open to that flex area. So again, the idea is that the staff is working collaboratively in this area and will use different spaces as they, as they fit the activity that they're doing with the students at that time.
Chair Mullen, can I interrupt for just a second and ask a question?
Sure, Ms. Boyd.
Yeah, I was just wondering, this looks a lot like the setup for Onika, where you have, I guess we called it pods at the time, where you have the, the space in the middle and you have the classrooms surrounding. Were the ideas for, for this, did that come from some conversations from the people at Onika?
Yeah, that certainly factors into it. I think there's a lot of high school, or sorry, a lot of elementary schools built in the last 20-plus years that are based on the pod concept. And the real advantage of that is that, again, you take that space that is, could have been a hallway outside and turn it into a learning space. So this is definitely an evolution of that prototype. I think the difference here is that the classrooms have a much more integral connection with that flex space. So it's not just what's outside the door. It's that the, the classroom kind of function leads out into that flex space. And it's a more collaborative version of that.
So is the way that these, these, what do you call them? I call it a pod, but.
The learning studio.
Are they closed off to the other areas? Because the only thing that, that I can think of, you've got open classroom four and open classroom two. If there's any kind of hall traffic, those areas are wide open to all that noise. So it looks like these are potentially cut off to that noise or?
Yep. Yep, yep, that's true. There's a, there's physical doors out to the hallway, the main hallway.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other, hold on a second. So are there any other questions before we move on? Thank you for waiting. I appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, there was one more question.
I have a question if I could.
Ms. Ellison.
Chair Mullen, okay. Um, yeah, first of all, I really love the calming room. I think that's, I can see a lot of great uses for that space for students. So I really love that. I have two questions though. The security of the open classrooms. I don't even like to, to bring this up, but there's, you know, there's been a lot of issues with security in America recently with students. And I want to make sure that our kids are, are safe. So did you say something about walls that you could move into place if necessary? In the event of a lockdown, what happens?
Sure, I'd be happy to. We take that very seriously. So these are schools, you have lockdown procedures and we have to accommodate that with the building. So that's absolutely a requirement. The way that they work in, in this kind of a building is that those doors, on this drawing, it's labeled two rest of building. Those doors will be hardened so that you can't get through them. We typically will either make that a solid wall or put security glasses so you can't, can't even break it out of the frame. And that provides space within this whole learning studio for students to shelter in place. The other piece that we give is there is actually the door, the mudroom door goes directly to the outside. So you would actually have the option to either evacuate or shelter in place depending on how procedures evolve over time.
Okay. And then I have one final question. And I guess this applies to all of the buildings as they're being designed and built and redesigned. Are there spaces that nursing mothers can use? Are, are there dedicated spaces that are set aside for our, our teachers who might be nursing?
Yes, yes. We have one of those in the administrative space. It's in the main office area.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure. Can we just ask and make sure that, ask if anybody else has any questions? As we're moving through this.
Chair Mullen, I've got a question.
Mr. Chapman.
Just so that I'm tracking correctly, classrooms two and four, they would not be assigned to a particular teacher, correct? I mean, they're not a standing classroom. Those would be used as, for different, for different types of activities? Or would they be assigned, you know, is the thought process that they'd be assigned to, to, you know, as two standing classrooms for two teachers?
Sure. It's a little bit more nuanced answer than that. So it, when the building gets to capacity, those will be capacity spaces. So that is a teaching station, if you will. The idea behind the studio that we worked on with the, the core groups is that the teachers within this space, so the five of them will collaborate. So one of them will be in, in classroom two at any given point during the day or the week. But they may not be there the next hour. They might switch to a different space depending on what they're doing. So the, the whole idea behind it is that you give them some variety in spaces and the assets that they have access to. And they determine each day what's the best way to deliver instruction to the students based on what they're doing. So it's assigned to somebody, but not necessarily full-time. They might switch to a different space if that fit them better.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, I, I didn't highlight, but that space that the floor that is orange there, that actually is special ed space. So the level one and level two special ed space, as well as intervention spaces in the building, are actually distributed within these pods. So part of the idea is to try to get those services to be closer to students and where they, where they are spending their day, as well as giving children the best chance that they can to be in an inclusive environment. So they will share in the pod. And then the other thing that we're working on with that group is how to make kind of a leveled experience. So students sometimes might be in the regular classrooms. They might be in the flex space. They might be in that smaller space that's labeled intervention space here, which is connected to the flex space. Or if they're having a really tough day, there's more sheltered spaces for them to be in, as well as having those calming rooms. So each one of the learning studios has those calming rooms. And that, that could be for any student that needs that, needs a break during a particular day. So. All right, well, I should ask if there's any more questions. Is there any more questions regarding the, where we're at with the planning? Okay, we, we can move forward. All right. So then the next slide shows just a preliminary plan of the Learning Commons. And these are a work in progress. I can tell you that this plan is already out of date since we put it in the board packets. So we're working on some revisions to this. But again, the idea is to make the Learning Commons the heart of the school and more open and connected to things. So why don't we go to the next slide? And that actually shows it in kind of a 3D view. So the idea is to have a connection to the outside. So there's a, a large window in the corner of the room. We intend to develop an outdoor learning area. There's sort of kind of a patio where students can go out and do different things. There is what we're calling a performance platform. So kind of a mini stage in here that allows performances and presentations and things to happen. And then there's a space here also for, we call them learning stairs, but a place to sit and read and things like that. And then we're working on that same common, concept of a bookroom here. Again, this one, I, I can hear what the next question will be. It looks a little severe in here, but it's the same intent. That really is like a reading room where the books also live. And this one shows it across the hall. That's one of the changes that we're making. We're actually moving it into the main area. So it's not, doesn't feel quite so disconnected. So it's not, doesn't feel quite so disconnected. All right, that wrapped up our elementary work. If there's no more questions, I could go on to the high school.
I don't see any. I think we can move on to the high school.
All right, great. So at the high school, for the project scope, obviously, the plan here is to unite all the grades, nine, 12, at the new building. There will be new furniture for all the new learning spaces as there is across the district. And then expansions and upgrades, it's almost too numerous to mention to the building. There certainly are parts of the building that are going to remain kind of in the same floor plan that they are now. But even those spaces have deferred maintenance money that will go to upgrade finishes. And then an allowance to do some reconfiguration to modernize the learning space as well. The building as a whole is planned to have about a 375,000 square foot addition. And the total, the building when it's done will be slightly over 600,000 square feet. And the total project cost again is about $179 million. The core planning group has been working hard. We've met seven times. We started out live and then about midway through the process, started meeting through Zoom, which has gone really quite well. Actually is an interesting way to meet. And we've made hay with that and had a lot of meetings in that format. And then we are in the process now of doing that round one of those user group meetings. The next slide shows some of our inspirational images that we're starting with. Again, we're always looking for some inspiration to help inform the design of the building. We don't exactly know how this is going to come to fruition in the building yet, but it's the beginning of the process. One, I think that everybody involved in the process from the school side is really thinking innovatively about the future and what education can and should be as we go forward and how to create student agency. So that, that image on the left has really been an inspiration in a couple of ways. One is that one drop can have a, a big effect on things. So small movements can have reverberations into the future. It also is round like North. So we're kind of working with that. And then on the right one, I love that image actually. This is a map of world shipping routes. And each color on there actually is a different kind of cargo that, that runs through that route. So we started thinking a lot about the lakes and all the water assets in your area and the way that lakes kind of affect and interact with humans or the way humans interact with them. And one of the things I love about this image is this idea that once you step off the land, that you can go anywhere, that you can choose your destiny and find your port of call and head in that direction. So we're kind of using that as a, as high school as a stepping off point to the rest of your life. So again, we don't know exactly how that's all going to come out in the building, but we find that really inspirational. Another thing that we're working on with the high school, and you got a little taste of it in the elementary school, is some kind of rebranding of spaces and terminology to help people think differently about the future. One of them, we are working on creating kind of a big gathering space. It will be the cafeteria in the building, but also really kind of a civic space that will be a community asset, asset, and it will work as the lobby for the auditorium and the lobby for the gym and all those kinds of things. And we're currently calling that the union. You don't need to keep that name long term, but that's the term that it has developed in the design teams. Another thing that we've been working with, you saw that idea of the learning studio in the elementary school. The high school has that too. And there's a concept behind that of an educational team of up to 12 people. The high school, most of the new ones are based on a six-person learning studio. But they, they work together around learning objectives with the intent of fostering collaboration and who share a meeting space. So that's part of how that relates. The next one, you already got this term in the last one, but the learning studio. So that's the place where the educational team does their work. And we'll show you how that plays out in the high school. And then the last one is learning, learning commons, which you saw in the elementary school as well. That, that really is the updated version of the media center. With the idea that at this point in history, the media is a little bit ubiquitous. And so to have a center where it is all held is a little bit redundant because it's fairly easy to get to. So the learning commons becomes a place for a lot of different activities to happen and collaboration. The next slide then shows you, this is the existing footprint of North. And as we looked at that building and how to add on to it, we found enough, a lot of interesting geometry. So you'll see some of those datum lines and those, the geometry of the building and how we're using that to add on to. And I know round buildings are much maligned. They're not one of my favorite pieces from the past. But quite frankly, North is a pretty nice example of it. There's a lot of really nice things happening in there. And so we're trying to leverage that as we add on to it and be respectful of that. The next slide, I will say again, is a very preliminary drawing, but this shows North Campus. So the dark gray there, or the lighter of the dark grays there is the original footprint. The dark gray is the expansion footprint. You can also see central on here down to the south. And all of these things are subject to change. So we've been meeting with the city right along and also county and state officials. And then we continue to get new information from them. So please understand that the, the plan will likely change by the next time you see it. But the basic concept that we have is we're leveraging as much space as we can for green space. So in the center of the building, center of the site between central and north, or the new high school, we're trying to create green space, so multifunctional green space in there, including a stadium and track, a practice field, tennis fields, and as much more as we can fit in there. We are also trying to leverage price field. So that will stay there. And one of the ideas that's emerged out of the design process with your stakeholders is that price field actually can function as a mini varsity field. So for, for events that have a small enough spectator requirement that they can fit in price field, that that can, they can actually be held on this campus. Where of course, big things like the football, football games will be at South as was planned for the referendum, but that's a little bit of a bonus. And then there's also quite a bit of green space north of the building, the Luricas Fields. And we're still working through what we're able to do on that site. It's quite wet. Those hatched areas on there show identified wetlands. And so we have to work around those and mitigate those. So more to come. At this point, we're not planning on putting fields there, but we'll continue to try to do that and see if we can figure out how to do that within your budget and within the regulations that we need to follow for that. On the other thing about this plan, this plan is starting to show properties that you've purchased. So some of the parking is over where houses exist now, and those are properties that you've closed on. And then the ones that are shaded a little bit lighter, those are also properties that you own. And the administration is still in discussions with more people about what properties you might get. As the, as you get more properties, or if you do, we will also modify the plan to take advantage of that. So that will be a, a thing that will develop as time goes. I'm going to keep going on the floor plan, but if you want to stop for questions on the site, we could do that.
Are there any questions so far? Okay, please continue.
All right. So here's our floor plan. And again, it's a preliminary floor plan. We feel like the spaces are settling in pretty well. This is the result of those seven meetings we had with your core group. I'll give you a quick tour. So you can kind of make out in there the original three circles of North. What we're doing is reconnecting them in the middle. So we'll be taking out the office and the area that's in the, kind of the web of the middle there. And it will become the new student union. So you can see that's the part shold in the, the yellow and the gold. That also serves, serves as the cafeteria. So the gray area just below that word student union there is the, the new kitchen and servery and central warehouse. To the right of that, there's a salmon colored piece. That's the main office. And so to the right, we anticipate being the main entry to the building where it is now. But then across the circle from that, there's also something labeled a student entry. So we foresee that being another main, main inroads to the building. The buses and the student parking will all be focused on that side of the building. Both of those enter right into that student union. And so I'll give you a really great way to circulate the building and help with congestion. So then real high level tour, the right side, the purple is the fine arts area. So you can see there's the new 800-seat auditorium and new music spaces, as well as remodeling some of the old music spaces. This plan shows the art, two art rooms, two new art rooms up there, but we're actually talking about moving those across the way to get the art department more co-located. Then if you go to the bottom of the plan, the things shown in red are the new athletic area. So the intent is to remodel your existing game gym into a new game gym. So we're going to increase the capacity to about 2,000 seats in there. And then there's a five-station fieldhouse, which you can see at the bottom of the plan. And then there's one more sixth gym, the auxiliary gym that you can see there. The game gym, which currently is one story down underground, we will also do that with the fieldhouse. So those two will be on the same level. And that's with all the locker rooms that I'll show you in a minute. There's also a new weight room and fitness room and community and fi-ed classrooms on this level. Then the upper left of the plan, shown in green and blue are the, kind of the balance of the educational spaces. So that the things labeled one, two, and three are more of those learning studios. And that's actually a three-story part of the building. And then the blue spaces are the pathway spaces or the specialty labs. And then dark green are science labs. So you can see how those are spread out. And then we are also looking at the existing part of the building. So the 100 hallways, you can see that there's more learning studio spaces labeled in there. And we'll be doing some remodeling to help make those feel a little bit more like the rest of the building. Of course, we have to work with the constraints that are there because we're not taking all the walls out. And then I think we'll go to the upstairs, if we go to the next plan. This just shows the next level up. So again, those three learning studios on the left continue up. On this floor, you can see what's labeled in turquoise or showed in turquoise there is the learning commons. So it builds off of the current media center in North and kind of eats its way through the side rooms there and opens itself up to the rest of the school. So the intent is to take that learning commons, which now will be in the middle of the three-story building and open it up and connect it out to the student spaces. And then there's also a few more pathway spaces and science labs being built on this area. And then I think we have the third floor next. So here you can see one more stack of that. So there's three more learning studios up here, some more science and a few of the balance of pathways. As well as each one of these floors has a little bit of administrative space. So that's part of what Dr. Gillespie is working on to help organize and build culture in the building to figure out how administration can be more connected to students. And then I believe the last plan is the lowest level. Actually, we go all the way down to the lower level now. So this shows you the main floor of the fieldhouse. Also on this lever, level, we have generous storage and a wrestling room. And then you can see the balance of the, the fitness rooms and things down here. So there's the old fitness room, which we're going to reuse and update a little bit, and then remodeling locker rooms. And again, those are all down on the level of the gym floor. Then I just have a couple of more detailed shots that you can take a look at. So the next one zooms in on that learning commons area. So like the other plans that you've seen, this is already being updated. We met again with that group this afternoon. Our second in the user group series with them. And we're starting to shift around exactly how this space is configured. But again, you can see how the idea is to open it up to the rest of the building, create a lot more open and flexible space and maximize sort of the, the asset for flexible learning and personalized learning that might happen in here. The next slide shows kind of a 3D view. And again, this is very preliminary, but gives you a little bit of idea how that space might start to become shaped and opened up. And again, connecting out to the student union. So you can see we have a grand stair that, that comes up from the main level and connects some of this second floor mezzanine. And then allows, allows you to kind of cut into the existing two-story building and create new entryways. So really this, this spot that's labeled student union, I would consider that's the new center of the school over there. That'll be kind of the critical mass where most students will spend their day, spend a good part of the day. Then the next slides, we have some details of the learning studio. So it's a similar concept to what you saw at the elementary school, but in a little bit different shape. So it again includes some special ed space. So that's shown in that same darker rust color. And then you can see the classrooms and it's a similar concept here, but it's based on six classrooms. And again, the idea here is that the staff works collaboratively to inhabit that space and decide what makes sense for them to, to use for whatever their lesson is today. And then another piece that I didn't feature as much in the elementary school, there is a staff area here. So part of the exchange for not having a classroom that's dedicated to you is that you have a professional staff office. And we're building that or designing that with the idea that you would have different zones within there. So there's more private zones where they can get professional work done or collaborate or work on the phone. And then there's a little bit more public spaces. You can kind of see on the left side there where they can connect with students and collaborate and be more accessible. Then the next slide shows kind of a 3D view of that again. And gives you just a little bit of flavor of that. We are working on reorganizing this again. We have dozens of people working on this every day. So we're, we're evolving the design a lot. So this will look different for sure next time you see it. But this embodies some of the concept. And that is the end of the high school presentation. So we'll ask you if you have any questions for us.
I know that Dr. Newmaster had a question, so I want to make sure I start there. Dr. Newmaster, you have a question?
Hi, again, as someone who's spent 30 plus years at North Campus, it's super exciting to see all of this happening. One thing wasn't mentioned that all of us that who lived and sweated there on third or second floor in the middle of the circle talked about every year. When can we get air conditioning? Because it's horrid on second floor in the middle.
Sure. So the district is, is directing quite a bit of the deferred maintenance money or the LTFM money towards this project. And the intent is to replace all those mechanical systems and put air conditioning in. I'm sorry, it's de-humidification. We call it de-humidification.
As long as it's cooler. We kept saying, every bar has a big thing on the roof. Can't we get an air conditioner on the roof up there? But this is hopeful.
Now you can, yeah, now you can.
I hope.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. I really appreciate all your guys' work and appreciate the update on the, on the direction of the building. Is there, is there additional slides that we need to pay that, that you guys have? Or is that it for your presentation?
We did just want to say thank you. We're super excited about this opportunity to help reshape your district. So we're having lots of fun doing that and working with your staff. We also wanted to just acknowledge Carl Sanderson, who is your construction manager. So they are working with us now. They're currently in a whole round of estimating. We've given a preliminary plans for those first projects. We do believe that we're on budget. We are maintaining our square footage and scope across the district. So we have good faith that we're going to be on budget. But we get, we'll get continual reports from them and collaborate with them to make sure that we stay on budget through the whole thing.
All right. Thank you all very much. Thank you for your work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before, so before we head into our first, Mr. Wall, did you have something to?
Yeah, I do. There's one more project that we didn't mention, and we're working actually with a separate architectural firm on that. And that is the gym addition to South Campus. That's really one of the early out of the chute projects that were taken on. So if you consider where the ticket booths are as you enter the stadium at South Campus, as you enter that stadium, right behind you is a green field next to the South Campus gym. And that's the location of where the gym addition at South Campus will go. In addition to the gym, will be restrooms that will be accessible from the stadium. So we're working to redesign that entrance to the stadium. We're going to move the ticket booths to the south. So it'll be more over by the tennis courts. We'll, we'll run fences from the stadium to the building addition. And that will open up the area between the building and the stadium as kind of a open space that people can gather. So the, the wonderful part about it for guests to our stadium is that they'll have access to indoor restrooms when they use our stadium. So that's coming together well. And that's actually going to be, we're going to be moving on that in January.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding that?
I said January, in June, we're, we'll be moving on that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, before we head into our first operational item, I just, Dr. Kaszczak, I just have some questions. And it's not as much regarding the facility update that we got today, but it's just kind of around the, around the world, kind of where things are now. And I know we're probably still waiting for guidance from MBE and MDH. But I'm just kind of wondering, is there anything that are, can you in the future, maybe next month, or actually, we don't have a work study next month. But is there, could you get us some follow-up on kind of what we're doing around the COVID stuff, the COVID-19? And our planning for our students going back to school in the fall? And just kind of having some questions regarding that stuff. Is there some work that's being done around that? I would just appreciate any new information or any information at all. Would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, well, we're
Yeah, well, we're, we're beginning to work on that, but as you said, there, there is no guidance yet. We don't know what we're going back to. So we, we have to make a lot of assumptions about what the fall is going to look like and then plan accordingly. But we don't know, we don't know what we're going to be facing in the fall in terms of students back in session in person or distance learning or some combination of the two. So, so yeah, absolutely. As we, as we begin in earnest that planning, we certainly will keep the board updated on that. But right now, our purpose has been to wrap up the school year successfully and beginning some of that discussion. Looking ahead to the fall without guidance at this point.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we will move into our first operational item. C1, which is the action on the workers comp insurance renewal. Mr. Wald, is that you?
It is. Each year at this time, we bring a renewal for the district, district's workers comp insurance. And we have received a, a renewal rate this year. It's actually a pretty favorable rate for us. It's at 595,828. You can see it on the screen. Which is roughly flat from what we saw last year. Reflects a 0.05% decrease. Well, what it really reflects is a 4% rate decrease. However, the premium is calculated based on payroll. And so as your payroll goes up, your, you know, your expense goes up unless your rate goes down. So we saw a 4% decrease in rate coupled with a 3% payroll increase. We're seeing just a roughly a flat. A flat proposal for next year. There's a few things I'm going to go ahead and present here. Just a few things I want to share. And one is when, when workers compensation is calculated, it's based on mod and that red line shows our mod. That's your, essentially your experience. So it's a, it's a credit or a, or a, or a debit. So if 1.0 mod is the industry average, if you're, if your mod is slightly above a 1.0, you're, you're paying a premium, a surcharge for that, for that experience. If your rate is below a 1.0, then you see, you know, you get a benefit from that, a rebate essentially for that. Ours is at a 1.1 and you can see historically how that has changed over time from 2014 down to where we're at today. And so we've essentially been flat the last four years. Second, calculating the expense for workers compensation is the net rate. And again, you follow that green line and you can see that correlates to our mod. We are part of MIST, which is the workers compensation. Minnesota Interscholastic, what does it stand for, Tom? It's on the, it's on the slide. Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust. And so we benefit from, we benefit from being a member of that. And we get some purchasing power so to, so to say, as a school district. And so you can see our rate has gone down steadily over time too. Whereas with this renewal, it's at 0.75, 75 cents per $100 of payroll. So you take our $79 million in payroll, divide it by 100, you get 790,000 times 0.75 and you get essentially our renewal rate. At our executive finance committee meeting last week, Deb Beloit asked the question about numbers of claims. And so I think you might all be interested in that too. And so the far right of this page, you can see the number of claims, workers comping claims that we have annually going back to 2014, 15. And so for the 1920 school year, we've had 161. As opposed to 174 the year before and 227 before that. And so we are seeing slightly lower numbers of claims. And that's impacting that rate as well. So the, the quote 595,828. We're just recommending that the board move to accept the 595,828 from Dakota Truck Underwriters for worker compensation insurance effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
So you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved, Mark.
Motion by Dr. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Mr. Wald, couple of things. First off, the, has any, any reach out been made either this year or in the past to other school districts of comparable size? Just to find out where their experience mod is landing, just so that we would have some type of comparison and maybe would help us look to see if there's some areas that we could possibly improve in as far as worker injury and claims activity if, if other districts were to have significantly less mods. So that, that is one question that I've got.
Okay. Well, if, you know, I think back to that mod experience that I showed from 2014 through 2016 where it, where it was pretty significant during those years where you, you see it drop was because we made some pretty significant efforts at the district level to track our workers comp. And it'd be, just became more aggressive in how we supported our employees to get back to work. And so that was, you know, that's, that's where, where, where we think we made the biggest change. Our human resources department, Rebecca Edberg and the benefits team there just does an outstanding job of working and tracking our, our workers comp claims. So we think that's where the benefit is. Tom, maybe, is Tom Wazork still there? Yeah, Tom, maybe you can speak on MIST. Has there been efforts from MIST to, have you seen anything that compares us to other districts?
Excuse me. Well, the worker comp isn't officially a part of MIST. We use Gallagher who, who runs MIST for us. But I have not really talked to anybody else about the experience mods for other districts, just because it's that's based on their history as calculated by the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry. So I, I guess I haven't compared mods very often.
Yeah, it's, it's just a question that, that came to mind. And I noticed that it did dip quite considerably from what it had been. But we are still paying, you know, 10% debit basically beyond what would be the, you know, what would be the base rate. So I'm just curious if, you know, going forward, we might want to take a look at that just to see. Maybe other districts are, you know, have mods at or, or greater than ours, but it, it might be a look see, you know, worth looking at just to see. The other question I have is what kind of claims typically are we seeing? Are they back injuries, slips and falls? Combination of both or some other area of, of worker injury that we're typically seeing in the work comp area?
Yeah, a lot of those are slips and falls. And then and quite a few kitchen injuries that we've been working to improve our kitchen safety. And we've made some progress in that area. But yeah, that's, it tends to be custodial injuries, kitchen injuries, and then slips and falls.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Questions or comments regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Arcan.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullin.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes and we are renewed. Next is our next operational item, C2, which is the action on the approval of the property purchase agreement. Mr. Wald, is this you all again?
I can, I can jump in here, Tim. I, it's another, another property in the area that's consistent with the philosophy that we, you know, we're not using eminent domain, but if area residents here reach out to us and it makes sense for us to purchase the property, then we've, we've worked with them. And so this is another one of those properties. And you've received information about that. So.
Dr. Kazmeczek, I, because of the video screening on video, I do not have the recommended action in front of us with the resolution. If you could read that, I would appreciate it.
Yep. So the recommended action tonight is to move to approve the purchase agreement for the property described as PID number 14302212005 located in the city of White Bear Lake, County of Ramsey, State of Minnesota. The board authorizes the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for finance and operations to sign all documents as necessary to acquire said property.
Thank you. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion regarding said action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Arcan.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullin.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. With that, unless there's anything else, Dr. Kazmeczek, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chairman Mullin, I, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
There's been a motion by Dr. Arcan. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Ellison. This will require a roll call vote.
Arcan.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullin.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all. I hope everyone has a pleasant Memorial Day weekend. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.